It is Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. This is the live stream of the special board meeting of the St. Peter School Board. I call this meeting to order. We would be looking for a motion to consider and adopt the agenda.
Dixon, I move to adopt the agenda, of course.
Stewie, your second.
Excellent, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. We will do a roll call, vote. Tim?
Logan Skard, aye.
John Carlson, aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Bill Soderland, aye. Tracy?
Stewie, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion carries. Consider request to speak on the agenda. We are doing this virtual, of course, so there is a live stream. We welcome everyone on the live stream tonight, and this is being recorded and will be replayed at a later date as well. If there are questions, we ask that you direct those to district staff. If you want to speak on behalf of an agenda item, you can send an email to an email address that we will be monitoring. And that email address, I'll say it a couple times, is covid-19information, all one word, at stpeterschools.org. All right, we will dive into action items. We have three action items tonight, all surrounding plans for the 2020-2021 school year. And as the governor announced last week, his guidelines for schools this coming year. We are meeting tonight to hear plans and make decisions about what St. Peter's schools will do. Superintendent Gronseth, if I may, just say a couple of things before we dive into this plan. First, I'm incredibly proud of you and our administrative team. I know you've spent a lot of hours on this since Thursday to now, and this is unprecedented and frankly impossible. There's no one-size-fits-all solution. There's no plan that is going to make 100% of area parents and guardians happy, area students happy, staff happy. You're really doing things that haven't had to have been done for generations, and I am really proud of the work that you've done. I'm overwhelmed by the dedication of district staff. I mean, I think in normal years, there's a lot of anxiousness and excitement and trepidation about going back to school because your jobs are so strenuous and so rewarding, but so difficult. And then you add on a national, international catastrophe and a pandemic, and concerns about safety and loved ones and your own health. And I just, I appreciate each and every one of you so much for being willing to approach your work and approach this plan with the same spirit that you normally attack your job with. So I just really appreciate that. Students and parents, this is going to be different. Even when we're talking about the difference between distance learning and in-person learning, distance learning will be different than it was last year. In-person will be different than it was last year. This will be a different type of year, and I think we just need to be flexible. We need to extend grace whenever possible. We need to have understanding, and we need to make sure that we're communicating throughout all of this. I just want to say that this plan is based on safety. It's based on the state. It's based on space, on staff, on students, and stability. And those are, I think, in a nutshell, trying to be a little bit alliterative, what we are dealing with as a district in these plans. You know, I think what would be best, because there's likely a lot of conversation and a lot of questions around this topic, and I'm speaking to myself as much as anyone. If we could let Superintendent Gronseth go through the presentation, get through it, hold her questions to the end, maybe write them down. And then I do want to go board member by board member. I know we don't normally do that. We have a free flow of conversation, but with this format and this topic, I think it's really important that we all get a chance to ask questions. So we will rotate between board members similarly to how we do that at the end when we do around the table. But that's how I prefer to work this agenda item, and then we'll go from there. But Superintendent Gronseth?
Thank you, Chair Leonard. You know, you, I want to echo some of what you said before I start, that this team is such a dedicated team. And what really comes out every time we're together, every time we're discussing these plans, is their heart for our students and our families and our community, and their dedication to making sure that whatever it is that we are planning will really meet the needs of every student, and making sure that all of our students have access to a really great learning experience where they're engaged and motivated in a rigorous program. And so I'm echoing your pride with this team, and it has just been wonderful to work with them. I know that the work started long before I got here. It's been a matter of months. But in these last few days, since the governor's announcement and direction, we've been able to pull this together, and it's thanks to the work of a great team in many different areas. So I'm going to present on the screen, so just a moment. And perhaps on the, should be up, perhaps on the streaming version, we could pin the presentation so that it appears larger. I know that we have currently about 25 people watching online, and I want them to be able to see it as much as possible as well. So this is really meant to cover all of the different modes that we could be in, in a district in the coming year. And so it is the reopening plan, and starts off with a message from me, just really saying that we are going to put safety first for our students and our staff, and make sure that we are providing an enriching environment for our students. And there's a table of contents. We've had some commitments that we really have been leaning on whenever we've had these conversations. As I already said, the number one is the health and safety of our students and staff, making sure that whatever we are planning for, we have protocols and practices in place for the safety of all concerned. Flexibility was another commitment. We know that we need to be able to respond to the changing needs of our students and our families and our community. And then there's equity, making sure that all of our students can access what they need. And when I say what they need, that can be different from student to student. And you will see that in our plans, there is room to provide extra support for students who need it. And then responsibility. Really, in this, we're talking about our fiduciary responsibility to the community to make sure that our plans fit within the resources that we have to do so. And so you will be able to see very quickly in this plan that there are ways that expenses could increase, and we want to make sure that we are keeping that in mind as we're planning and making sure that we can afford to do what we plan to do. Our goal was really to develop the three different scenarios that the Minnesota Department of Education was asking us to. And that was a full return of students or a hybrid model that included both in-person and distance learning, and then a continuation of distance learning if we needed to use that. Just want to give another shout-out to our partners. In the spring, we surveyed the community, and that feedback was very helpful as we were planning for the fall. And also, other organizations within the community that helped to provide things like extra meals for our students when the schools were on break and during other times. And just the partners that we have here in St. Peter, in the city of St. Peter, and in our county partners, we look forward to continuing to work with them to meet the needs of our students and families in areas such as internet access, food access, and personal protection equipment. I'm so used to saying PPE. Making sure that we have what we need to keep everyone safe. And then the Department of Education, the Department of Health, and the Center for Disease Control have all been really good resources for us and sources of information during this pandemic. Then we dive into really the health, safety, and operations. It's those protocols and practices that we've been working on getting in place to ensure the safety of our students and staff. I'm not going to read every line of this to you, but perhaps I'll highlight that there are so many details that have been worked through, from how are we going to mark the floor? How are we going to walk down the hall? How do we enter the building? And making sure that there's signage, and we are going to be working on training all staff, and then helping all of our students to understand a new way of being in our buildings. Signs and floor markings are going to be a piece of that as reminders. We want all the adults involved to be using the same language so that all of our students and staff have an understanding of how to be in our new spaces. So everything from drinking fountains, the drinking fountains that have been turned off, but the bottle fillers are still on, and classroom sinks will be used for filling water bottles. We'll also have cups available. That's just one example of the kind of detail that we've been working through, kind of walking through a student day from beginning to end, thinking about what they need to know to be able to be safe. And one of the things that has come up is that we really want to take these opportunities when perhaps students aren't following the procedures or guidelines as education. We're not looking to punish someone for not doing something in the right way, but just to educate, make sure they know how to function in this environment. I also wanted to highlight the cleaning. We have cleaning protocols that happen throughout the day on highly touched surfaces. Even now, we have staff that go through, they wipe all the doorknobs, light switches, handrails. Anything that people are touching regularly is cleaned multiple times a day. Daily health screening will be something that we are working with families on. We are looking for that to happen at home. We're going to be making sure that if people need thermometers, that we're putting them in touch with resources so that they can get what they need to do screenings at home before they come to school. And the same is true with staff. And doing things like reteaching how to hand wash properly, making sure that we are building times into the day where students are washing their hands, and making sure that there's hand sanitizer available throughout the building as well. Paying close attention to those things that are usually shared. We're making it so that each student has really their own supplies, that there's not a lot of sharing going on. All of those details would be coming out before school started to make sure that everyone knew how that was going to be handled. Face coverings are part of the Governor's Executive Order 2081 that mandates face coverings in school buildings. So that means that all staff and all K-12 students will be expected to wear a staff, wear a staff, wear a face covering. And should they forget, we will have extras on hand, disposable face coverings for them to use. We have ordered some from the district, and in the governor's statements, we also learned that we will be receiving face coverings from the state as well. I believe it was three disposable masks for every student, so that means about 6,000. We also have face coverings for all staff and shields, and so we will be prepared with really thousands and thousands of face masks to meet that need. As far as visitors in our building, we will be limiting our visits, as well as things like field trips will be limited, making sure that we are keeping exposure to the lowest rate possible. Transportation has been one of the larger challenges with this. And when we are in a hybrid model, we are limited to 50% of capacity in buses. That means a school bus that usually would transport 60 students could now transport perhaps 30. And so we will need to be creative about how we are scheduling those, and we may consider adjusting our school times slightly. We have a meeting coming up with the bus company to discuss that and how we can meet these requirements. Again, everyone would be wearing face coverings on the buses, and if students are at the bus stop and forgot theirs, again, we will have some extras to be able to provide those should they forget one. Now, I have to mention that with about, you know, over 2,000 students, if a lot of students are forgetting on a regular basis, we're going to go through those masks pretty quickly. So that is going to be a point that we are making to remember face coverings as much as possible. Again, with the hygiene on our buses, they'll be cleaned following each route, and they may be as much as possible having the windows or the top hatch open just to increase ventilation. And again, there'll be signage on buses for reminders for social distancing and wearing face masks and all of that. We'll also be changing our drop-off and pickup protocols. Generally, they've been dropped off in one place and all the kids pour in, and now we're going to be spreading them out so that we're not creating a large gathering of students in one place. So they'll be dropped in various areas around the building and coming into different entries. And we'll make sure everyone is getting that information before the school year begins so that they know what to expect on that first day of school. With our students receiving special services, we want to ensure everyone that they would continue to receive those supports that are written into their IEPs and into their personal goals, and making sure that their environments are safe as well. And we may have to change some of our caseloads or our schedules, but we are dedicated to making sure that all of those students are receiving the support they need to be successful. Speaking of, well, we'll get to that in a moment. Student support and engagement. We want to make sure that all of our students have what they need to be successful, and we'll continue to partner with our community to make sure that we are looking at internet access, food access, connections to mental health supports, anything that families are going to need to be successful, and really partnering with each and every family to make sure that every student is successful. Co-curricular activities. We don't know all the details yet. I know that the High School League met today and made some decisions. We know what we heard on Twitter with everyone else, and we are awaiting the formal documents with that information. We would be looking to schedule a meeting of the co-curricular committee, maybe even as early as early next week, once we get the details to work through. So that brings us to our instructional models. As I mentioned before, there are the three models: in-person, hybrid, and a continuation of distance learning. And this is a graphic that we borrowed from the state that shows as viral activity goes up, our learning model becomes more restricted. So if it's very low, we could be in-person. If we're in the middle, we're in hybrid. And if we have a high rate of infection, we would move to distance learning. We do understand that for a variety of reasons, families may choose to be in distance learning or need to be in distance learning at any time or all the time. And so we have prepared for any students who require to have distance learning as well. A survey will be coming out later this week asking families what their preferences are for the coming school year on topics such as distance learning, transportation, childcare, about technology. And it's really important that families fill that out as quickly as they can because that information will be very helpful as we finalize our plans for the year and make sure that we have enough staffing in place. So with the full return of students for in-person learning, whoops, sorry about that. This is most familiar to most of us. It means that all of our students are coming back. Even if that happened, we would have protocols in place. Face masks would be required. We would still be controlling, you know, directions that you're going in the hallway, doing food service a little bit differently. We wouldn't want hundreds of students in the cafeteria, so we would be working on different schedules and how meals are prepared and how they're handed out, making sure that we have safety protocols in place. This box in the corner is another graphic that we borrowed from the state presentation. It really lists out exactly what's required by the state for in-person and in-hybrid learning. And so masks are there, PPE is there, building routines of hygiene. All of those things that you've just heard me talk about are on that list. So it's kind of our double check to make sure that we added, included it all. As we move into looking at hybrid or a partial return, the rules change a bit, and you can see that there's another added list on the bottom here. The most notable is that social distancing at six feet comes into play. So we need to make sure that we're spacing our students and our staff out. That's when we can use our facilities to 50% capacity. So that means the number that could usually fit, according to the fire marshal in any of our buildings or in individual classrooms, we have to limit that to 50% of that number. And then transportation, again, at 50%, and making sure that we have staff to be able to cover those areas. Again, face coverings would be the norm, and making sure that each student has their own device, so they're not sharing iPads or sharing those supplies. Food service would be in-person for those students who are in school on those days. And on the day that they are there, they would be able to take an extra meal for the next day for when they're on distance learning. And we would, again, make sure that we're sending all that information out before the start of school so people knew exactly how that would work. As always, in hybrid, the distance learning model would be available to any families who preferred that or needed that. We'd also be providing school-age care for tier-one families in the hybrid model on the days that they're not in school. Because we'll be using the buildings during those days, there will be students here and everyone in class. We have been working with the community center to secure spaces within that building to provide childcare during hybrid for those tier-one families on the days of distance learning. So that would be two days a week. And then on Fridays, childcare would be available in our school buildings as usual for those tier-one families. I also want to mention that the definition of tier-one families has changed a bit in this executive order. One of the things I'm happy to say is that it now includes educators and those working in the schools so that as we are providing that critical education for our students, their children can be in childcare on their distance learning days as well if they attend school here in St. Peter. Looking a little bit more at the hybrid model, talking about what that schedule would look like. Starting with our pre-K students, they are the ones that would be a bit different. They'll be able to follow their normal schedule, but they'll have smaller class sizes, and that's why they're able to do that. For our kindergarten through 12th grade students, they would be coming to school in-person two days a week. They would be either on the blue team or the white team. Go blue and white, go Saints. The blue team would be here on Monday and Wednesdays in person, and then Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays have distance learning. And the white team would have Tuesdays and Thursdays in person with Monday, Wednesday, and Friday online, which means everyone has distance learning on Fridays. Just a little bit more graphic for those of us who are a little more visual of what that would look like being in school or through distance learning, and what that looks like for each team. So a list of some important dates to remember, and then the school year calendar laid out for blue team, white team, and then red being everyone in distance learning. If we were to, if the viral spread gets too high, we will look at a continuation of distance learning. I know that last spring, we called it distance learning. I prefer to think of it more as emergency instruction. You know, back in that day in March, school districts across the state had three days to go from our traditional model to something we had never done before. We've had time since then to do a lot of planning and gathering feedback and learning from what we had done. We've already been doing training this summer with our staff, looking at different ways of providing hybrid instruction, looking at higher levels of engagement, higher levels of rigor. And when we say distance learning, it will look different than it did last spring. Should that happen, we would also be providing childcare to our tier-one workers again. That would be right in our buildings if we weren't using them for hybrid instruction. And then food service, very similar to what we had provided last spring. So then we have three models, and it is very possible that we could use all three of those models during this school year. It all depends on what is happening in our health as a community. And as we move from one to the next, And as we move from one to the next, we'll be looking at county numbers of the COVID cases. And that's done with a formula that I'm showing here. And this graphic really helped me when I saw it in the state report. If you take the total number of cases for, uh, over 14 days and then divide that by the county population divided by 10,000, gives you a 14-day county level case rate per 10,000 people. So we serve the counties of both Niklet and Lesure. And so we need to consider the numbers from both of those counties. And as we've looked at those numbers, they provided, um, some trend data, uh, back to June about what that looked like over that amount of time. If you look at both of those counties, they're very similar and they waver between, say, 18 and 22%. And if you look at that 18 to 22 range, you see that, that puts us kind of right, right at the middle of one of those decision lines. And the guidance that we've been given has been to err to the, um, the less favorable numbers if you're in multiple counties. And so if we're going back between that 18 to 22 mark in both counties, we want to really err towards caution and we want to err towards consistency. We don't want to have to change our model every, you know, these, these numbers are going to come out once a week. We don't want to say, oh, next week we can be in person at the elementary. And then a week go by and say, oh, now we have to go to hybrid. You know, we want to watch those numbers over a longer period of time. We want to be able to, um, sustain what we're doing. We know that that's best for families. We know that's best for students and for staff. If we can plan for longer than a week at a time. If we were deciding today, and we are recommending this today, um, that we start with everyone in hybrid. We feel like this is the model that we can sustain the longest. And I know that some, some other districts that you might hear about are, are bringing everybody back, um, and using every single classroom in their building and spreading their staff and moving staff from one licensure area to another to be able to, to keep their numbers low. And we had conversations about that as well. But then we came back to our capacity to be flexible. Our capacity to respond when needs arise. You know, we've, we've already had the experience of having staff members test positive, of having family members of students test positive and, and need to react to that. We really want to be able to, um, fill in as, as needed for staff members. Should they need to quarantine or should they, they fall ill? We want to have some flexibility in our staff to be able to meet needs and offer consistency to those students as well. And consist, and flexibility within our building. If we do need to change a room for a few days or a longer period of time, we want to have the space to be able to do that as well. So really we're looking at the long term and we will continue to look at trend data. If we see that things are trending up, if, if it's going to get to the point that we have to go to distance learning, we want to know far enough ahead that we can plan for that. If those trends are trending downward, we'll be able to plan for that as well. I think it's good that we have at least a 14-day window that we're looking at. So daily spikes or events won't affect it too much. So that was a lot of information coming flying at you all at once. I know that for some of you, this was new. If you're watching it streaming, it was definitely new. Although we have been working with some of our community groups and community partners and some of our staff groups to review this plan and give us their feedback. And we've made tweaks along the way and changed some things based on that feedback. And, uh, now I want to give, uh, an opportunity to our principals to speak, um, directly to their buildings and, and add anything that I may have missed along the way. So why don't we start with, um, Principal Ingeldinger at the high school?
Sure, uh, I would just like to add that the high school, um, one change that we've made to our schedule is that we've gone, we've gone solid block. Uh, as those of you who've had kids come through the system know, we have had what we've referred to as a modified block. Uh, and, and we just realized that, uh, with all of the transitions that kids make through the day in order to make that happen, um, it wasn't, it wasn't safe. So, uh, math and world languages, which have typically been those skinnies of we've, as we've called them, uh, have now been changed to semester block courses, uh, to, to avoid more transitions. As well as, and, and I'm sorry to students who are watching right now. We've had to eliminate, um, Saints time from our schedule. Uh, Saints time, uh, if you, if you understand that has been a time for personal learning plans, home rooms, presentations, uh, if kids have needed to meet with, with teachers for, um, test makeup or extra help, that's been about a 20 to 25 minute time, um, during the day. But also many of them used it for socializing or second, second chance breakfast. And so that's also been eliminated from the high school schedule.
And at the middle school, um, we have, have made a similar decision. Uh, we have been running an alternating block, uh, with an A-day, B-day schedule. And once again, to simplify things and to minimize that transition, um, we are also going to a full block, uh, where some of our courses will be straight every day, uh, for a semester. And some of those will be on a, um, quarter rotation. So that will, um, change the way that we transition from class to class. But in the end, we think it will simplify things for students, staff and provide a safer environment.
And at North Elementary, um, first I would say, um, that I, again, as far as the team goes and the effort and time put into this plan, um, Superintendent Grunsaath, really did a nice job going back over it and making it digestible. I mean, it's a very, it's a very high level plan, but it does allow, um, the building principals to really look at it and put the gears into action. I mean, the specifics of the, um, the plan itself will start out to, start to unfold now. And, um, as we met with area schools and principals and other elementaries over the last couple of months, you know, wavering back and forth on, you know, what could be best in this very challenging situation. I think error on the side of caution, consistency, um, trying to build a schedule that families can still count on, kind of know that routine and try to get our students back to any type of level of normalcy that they've enjoyed in the past is just, um, monumental. Like that's the foundation of this plan. So caution and consistency. And then, um, as far as the scheduling goes, um, at the elementary is it, it's pretty much going to be, um, as history has allowed it to take place, or we're going to keep, um, putting importance on our specialty areas. We want to make sure that our students get a well-rounded education. So we're still going to have the FIADS and the arts and music and STEM the best we can, um, in a safe manner and a safe routine. You know, and we've, we're having to make some schedule changes to make that fit since Dorian and I share some staff across the buildings. We're trying to make some adjustments so that we don't have, uh, mixing of the students and keep the kids together in cohorts. So, um, and I really appreciate like that flexibility of space that we're going to be able to have without spreading ourselves too thin all over our buildings and allow that flexibility. When students and staff get sick, we have, we have the support and the framework, uh, to keep the system going.
And I think Darren really touched on a lot of the things that he said about North are also, um, the same for South. One of the things that just really weighed heavily on our hearts is that when we have those kids, we want their experience to be a true school experience. And especially when you're looking at, um, children who are coming to school for the first time. And so we did think about, um, the impact of what, what it does to families if we are not having all students return to school. And we, we had to really weigh that with, what does their educational day look like when they are with us? And we're trying as hard as we can to make sure that when they're here, it's the best time and that we really are focused on, on what they need and what, and, and making it as normal as we can make it on a very, very unusual year. But, um, in order to do that, we really do want to have people teaching in their areas. We want a kindergartner to have a kindergarten teacher, um, not, nothing wrong with FIAD or music teachers, but, um, that, that is not who I want them to be spending their whole day with when we're working on those foundational skills. I want them to get FIAD from a FIAD teacher and music from a music teacher and all of our specialists. Um, the other thing that happens with the, uh, the, uh, spreading out of students in multiple areas so that they can be in school every day is it really does limit us. Our substitutes are primarily, um, they are all retired teachers. That's who we have right now. And at this point, I'm not sure any of them would be willing to come in and, and do the subbing for us. So that's one of those things too, where we might be able to get it started, but how could we sustain it? It may easily fall apart within that very first week. So we needed to put something together so that we have a plan that is, goes deep as well.
Our early childhood program model really lends itself well to, to the situation because we do have small class sizes and for the most part, we do have large learning spaces. And so as we reviewed, um, what would be best for our three, fours and fives and younger, really trying to get them onsite as much as possible, um, was our goal. Um, they, they are not held to the same standard as far as face coverings, et cetera. Certainly our staff will be wearing them. So keeping that schedule, whether a child comes two days a week, three days a week, four days or five days a week, for that two and a half hours per day. Uh, we looked at that and we really felt like we could continue that programming as is both in the in-person and in the hybrid model. Certainly if our district or the elementary school moves to distance learning, then early childhood will shift that direction as well. But with distance learning and early childhood, we really need those kids, um, onsite with their, with their peers and with their teachers. So that's our goal certainly. Number one is keeping kids and staff safe. Um, so we feel like this plan can do this and I certainly appreciate, um, Mr. Grunsaath's leadership and guidance when it comes to looking at that consistency. Um, not wanting to flip back and forth for families, I think, um, was really well thought out and key.
Well, thank you, everyone. That was a, a very thorough and, and excellent description of the plan. And if I can just summarize, uh, what, what the administrative team, uh, is recommending for the start of the school year at this point, based on the numbers, uh, would be, um, hybrid for all, correct? Superintendent Grunsaath? Any parent or guardian can opt to 100% distance learning if that is their family's choice. And any, uh, family of a student with an IEP can request, uh, additional, uh, school time or different school time than the, the model that we described. And that would be a conversation between, uh, them and the IEP team. Is that correct?
Right, that would happen, um, as a result of conversations with families and with IEP teams to consider if additional time would be necessary. That doesn't mean that, uh, every student with an IEP needs to have that extra, that extra time in school, but certainly is, um, something that we could consider. And also students with 504s or students who maybe are just struggling and just needs, um, an extra boost. And that may be either more time in person, or it could be, um, send some additional contact through distance learning, some remote support directly from staff as well. So it's really just what, what each student needs to be successful.
Great, thank you. And, uh, one last thing, um, I, you know, Superintendent Grunsaath said it, um, but we're not making decisions about activities, uh, in this meeting. We don't have all of the information. I just want that clear on the live stream, uh, that activities is a separate discussion. And we'll look to have that through our, um, our committee, uh, next week, um, our co-curricular committee. But now I think is a great time to, to ask questions. And so I'm going to go through and, and each one of you, uh, will have a chance to ask the questions, uh, that you would like. And if it's okay, Tim, we'll start with you.
Yep, that's fine. Um, I have a couple. So I'm just curious to know, and I'm assuming that we've got a plan on whether or not, and if and when we have a positive case, whether it be in the students or in the, uh, staff ranks. Do we have a plan as to how we're going to move forward from that?
We do. Thank you, member Logan Scott for the question. Unfortunately, we've already had the opportunity to practice those and practice what it, what it means to do some tracing of contacts and working closely with, uh, the Department of Health on how to best respond to that. So we do have plans in place, um, for responding to that and protocols. One of the other things that the state is doing is providing regional supports. So there will be regional areas. They don't start until a little bit later this month, but we'll have someone, um, closer in our region who will be our contact for working through those situations exactly.
Thank you. I have another question, Ben. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Uh, it has to do with the screenings. So we're going to go with self screenings and everybody self-screens on their own. I would assume there was a lot of discussion as to screening everybody coming into buildings, on days that we have in-person learning. I just curious as to know it, why we're not screening everybody coming in? If it was due to the, you know, just, I know that it's fairly staff intensive. And I know that it takes time and I can't.
Did he freeze or did I?
He froze.
Okay.
Let's, uh, if it's okay, let's table that question, uh, so that he can hear the answer when he, um, when he gets back in. John, do you have, uh, questions?
Yes, uh, I do. Um, and just, I'll, I'll just jump right back on Tim's, uh, thing. Did, did the schools consider using thermal scans instead of just, uh, you know, uh, self-screening as people enter? I know thermal scans turned out for Gustavus not to be as expensive as they thought they were going to be. And it's, uh, face recognition and, uh, it's pretty easy to set up. Has there been any talk about that?
Well, we did talk quite a bit about screening. And for summer school, we, we did have the taking every child's temperature before they get out of the car and doing that kind of screening. And it is both time and staff intensive to be able to do that. We had some conversations about, uh, the devices. And I guess we have more to learn on that, uh, something that we could, could look more into. But we did talk about that we are going to have students coming in. I suppose much like Gustavus, coming in different doorways, uh, different buildings. And how do we make sure that every child is passing in front of that scanner without having, you know, a couple, a, a line of many, many kids down the, down the sidewalk waiting to, to come through. Or if they come through all together and it scans everyone, um, and how to go about that. In the end, we really decided to focus on education and communication with our families. Because we would much prefer that families are screening at home before kids are getting on the bus or, uh, getting to school, getting dropped up. Uh, getting to school, getting dropped up, up at school and then finding out. Um, that they're ill. So we're really hoping that that can happen at home. Uh, before, before students come. And there are so many, um. There's so many other reasons a student might have a temperature. Uh, that it's, it's also tough to, to just. Go on that alone. So, um. That, that is why we chose the screening that we, we did. If others. Uh, on the admin team have other things to add to that, feel free to, to jump in.
I know, I know. One of the points Rachel Fickers, district school nurse made was that there are many other symptoms. So fever may or may not be a symptom. And so just taking that into consideration, doing that overall health screening, she felt was, um. Was maybe inappropriate, was an appropriate, um, plan. Certainly, we have a meeting scheduled with Nicollet County Public Health this week. So certainly if we hear differently or receive different guidance, we, we'll revisit that for sure.
Yeah, I, I think it's worth revisiting since we do have a single point of entry in all of our building. That if we, if we set up a couple of those, that might be a possible option. And to your point, I mean, if someone does have a temperature, they probably shouldn't come to school whether they have COVID or not. So. Um, how do you handle someone who won't wear a mask? There is a minority, but a very vocal minority that. Doesn't think this is a real. And I, early on, it was mentioned, we, we want to educate and not, not punish, but what if they're being educated? That you don't need a mask? How are we gonna handle those situations?
Well, staff, um. Face coverings won't be optional. Um, they will have to wear some kind of face covering, whether it's face covering or a shield. Um, if there is a, a refusal. Then maybe the alternative is that they need to be on distance learning if they are saying that they absolutely will not wear a mask or a shield. And that, that will need to happen.
Cool. On bussing, uh, how many per bus? I couldn't really tell from the breakdown. Uh, and then is that gonna have a cost change on our, our bussing situation? Have you talked to the bus company if, if they're gonna charge us more for this or?
Uh, we have a, a meeting coming up with the bus company, um, either later this week or, or next week. I'm kinda losing track of my schedule a little bit. Um, to talk about those models and the expense that would be tied to them. The number of kids on the bus depends on the capacity of the bus. There's a few different sizes of those buses. Um, but if, you know, if it's a 50 passenger bus, the capacity is 25. If it's a 72 passenger bus, then it's, what is it, 32?
Okay, cool. Um, also mentioned is the deep cleaning. Is there gonna be more custodial hires as well? Just because, uh, the, of the intensive time that we need to put into cleaning. Uh, I think we have a category of housekeepers and I think that that would be, fit the mold, but we'd probably need a few more. Is that being considered at this point?
That's one of the things that we're working on right now is really listing out all of the tasks that have to occur. You know, we're kinda waiting for, um, the governor to decide which model we're going to be in, to decide. Uh, how much staff we would need to, to do that. And so I do have some estimates on, on staffing to. To make sure that we're able to do that. We may be looking at, um, adding a few of those housekeeping positions.
Thank you. Um. And I'm trying to get through these as quick as I can. I appreciate the time and the effort that you guys have put in. Uh, teachers that are of high risk, if someone, if there's, if we have a, a teacher that has a dis- uh, uh. Uh, diabetes, say, or is, you know, 60 years old. Uh, how are we accommodating those people? Are we, uh, do we have a plan to not put them at, at risk?
You know, I. This is really an individual case by case matter. Um, and it will be looking at each of those areas and the duties of each of those positions. If it is something that we can provide an appropriate accommodation for. Then we would, we would be providing that accommodation. If their medical professionals don't feel that those accommodations would work. Um, then we would like to know what, what are the accommodations that would work? And if, if we get to the point that they're not able to perform the duties of their job description. Then we would work within the contract and when, within, um, the family first legislation. To make sure that they are getting all the benefits that, um. They have rights to under their contracts. You do.
So we, um, Mr. Gronsas and I did meet with our, um, SPEA representative group today. And did go, um, got some feedback on the plan and did talk about, uh, specifically those types of situations. So we feel like our communication is good there. We've got some documents that are in the works for folks to take to their healthcare providers. So that we can get a clear picture of what those accommodations may be. And as Mr. Gronsas said, there would be options, whether it be under families' first leave, family medical leave, um, those types of things should, should that be the case? We're certainly hoping that the safety precautions that we're putting in place as the district will meet the needs of our staff and our students. Um, so that very few people would need those accommodations.
Well.
Hey, John.
Yep.
How about one more question and then we'll move to Tracy and then, uh, Bill and then Drew and then back to you. How about that?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Uh, so substitute teachers, we have a history of hiring only licensed substitute. Uh, due to the, uh, point that I think, uh, one of the principals brought up, that a lot of our substitutes are, you know, retired teachers. Have we, are we considering, uh. Relaxing that standard and maybe using some of our paraprofessionals as substitute teachers?
Um, we haven't had those conversations specifically yet, but, um, you know, certainly we could look at short. Short-term call, uh, substitutes. Um, that it, those would be people who have a degree but not a, um. Not a teaching degree. Um, and that is something that we could consider as well.
Thank you.
Excellent. Tracy, you're up and then, uh, Bill?
Okay, so I just have to go back to what you just said. So if we do have, um. Paras in the building that are going to be on short-term. Call, I'm expecting that or thinking we would probably pay them the rate that they would, without a short-term call. Person would get paid? Or are they still gonna get paid their para rate? You don't need to answer that maybe right now or just put that in your thinking tank? Um, but I could, you know, I can sure answer that. Thank you.
Yep, when we have a paraprofessional or anyone else in our district has a short call substitute license. If they're functioning then in that role of a teacher, they receive substitute teacher pay, whether it be half day or full day. Um, so, so you're, you're right. You know, they, it's really the difference between their para rate. And the teacher rate is what they get paid.
Yeah. Okay, so that doesn't count as one of my questions. I'm kidding. You guys can answer really quick, but I'm a quick thinker. All right, so we have that nice little formula that pumps out this great number that gives us a recommendation of what we're supposed to do. Is, and I'm kind of a visual person and sometimes knowing the number is easy to understand or where we're at. Are we close to this? Are we close to that? Are you guys bugging out on me? Am I okay?
You're okay.
Okay, I'll send all you guys stop moving on my screen. So is there a way for us to, I mean, is. That number on the county website or our website? I'm guessing you guys probably have that all graphed out in a nice little chart somewhere. I don't know, maybe sharing that information could be helpful for people.
Yeah, that did come from the Department of Health. Uh, it's on their website by county and they will be updating that weekly. And then, um. You know, we, we can have access to that on a, uh, a daily basis, but they're reporting it out in that forum on Thursdays.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so then, um. I forgot, I'm on the committee. I didn't ask this this morning and I should have, but. I'm guessing that we've had, um, our new special education coordinator, this Mrs. McNogly, and I know I'm saying her name wrong. Um, has anybody looked at that from that level? Um, how are we going to? I mean, obviously we're going to accommodate those needs. I have no doubt about that, but. Um, obviously I talked to a lot of people in that circle and there's a lot of like, you know. Us moms can be a little more high-strung about that because we have to think about more things. So what can parents do? And what can they expect, you know, to be able to know that their kids are gonna be taken care of?
All right, are you speaking about M-Vet specifically?
Um, no, I'm speaking about our kids in St. Peter's schools that are on IEPs like. Is, um, Joey Smith. You know, he could really benefit from, you know, maybe he's gonna be all distance learning because he just has medical needs and he can't come or. This kid really could use, you know, an extra day. But how are those, I mean, because there's, there's just a lot of numbers. It's not like they have like two kids, you know what I mean? So how are we gonna get through, how are teachers going to get through that analysis of those kids?
One of the things that we're developing is really a, a metric or a score sheet. That would indicate higher levels of need. So, you know, if, if they have an IEP, if they have this, if they have that, if they're doing this, if they have that need. And that will give us kind of a, a score. And then, not that that score is the end-all and be-all, but it's a place to kind of start those conversations that. Boy, we have, we have students who have some really high needs in this area. And those are the cases that we should look at first and, and work through that.
Okay, I'm gonna ask two more questions, Ben. Um, I'm going to ask how, um, my friendly folks at Community Yet are doing. They're such an important part, so I wanna know, are we, are we doing anything down there? What kind of classes are you able to offer or how has that been affected?
I'll let Tammy take that one.
Thanks, Tracy. Um, we're, we're excited about fall. We're moving forward. We have a variety of classes. Some of them are online, um, some of them are in-person and we're going with the adage that we will follow what the health department says. And make decisions regarding that, but, um, we have a slate of classes that are all ready, so.
Cool. All right, my last one is, and I know I'm just, this is just a curiosity thing. Cause our, none of the places that our kids go, there's a lot of rooms. So are we devoting rooms to send all the sick kids that come to school? Because you know that's gonna happen, right? It happens on a normal day. So we're gonna have at least doubles. So where are we gonna put these kids? I mean, is that all, I'm guessing that's all been thought out, but I still feel the need to ask.
Yes, each site will have, um, I don't like the, the name of the isolation room. Um.
Sounds pretty distracting to me.
That's, that's the, uh, the state's, uh, term. And that is in, in our guidance is to have an identified place. For students to wait to, you know, either be picked up by their parents. Um, or whatever arrangements families are making.
I'm, I'm good to go, Ben.
Great, thank you, Tracy. Uh, Bill?
Yeah, thank you for, uh. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hi, thanks for all the thought and effort that went into this. Uh, one of the questions I have. Are we intending as a school district to enlist anybody in the community that is a healthcare? Provider, for example, a medical doctor, a nurse practitioner. To, to cooperate and work with us on what we are doing.
Um, we, we have not had any conversations about, oh, were you done? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I'm done with that question.
Okay, we, we haven't had any conversations, but we have been working closely with our school nurses. And they in turn have been in contact with their, their state group. Getting, uh, regular feedback on a weekly basis from the Department of Health. And that's really where, where we're taking our guidance.
And if I may, you know, public, public health is great and we need it. But there's also, you know, individual clinical. Provider services that could be. Hopefully utilized within the school. My recommendation is that we at least reach out to the community and see if anybody would participate with us. In helping monitor what we're doing and giving us input. Because public health is different than clinical practice, completely different. And I think that would be really useful. Uh. Secondarily, uh, this is, this is a, a statement, but if we're, if we're gonna rely on self-assessment. To see if a child's, uh, coming into school or not, I think that's a problem. I think. That's gonna be a gaping hole in what we're doing. This is, this is an unprecedented time and we're trying to balance. Public health with the needs of the children. And all the risks that are associated with essentially isolating children and, and preventing them from progressing. Especially in the younger ages where they're being, they're developing social skills and, and whatnot. So. This is an unprecedented time and I think if we're gonna get this right, we have to have protocols in place and not guess. And hope people are doing the right thing. We need to, to hope they're doing the right thing, but we also need to verify that. I've got a, a bunch more, but that's where I'll leave it for right now.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Soderland. Uh, Drew?
I, I don't think I have a whole lot of answerable questions at this point. I, I, I thank you for your time this morning. We looked at this plan earlier, um, as a smaller committee. Bring it to the full board, um. I do see this as a, a fairly complete and thorough framework of the, uh. But the, the plan that the state has given us for, for implementing their guidelines, basically, and, uh. And I'm okay with that. It's, it's high level. It doesn't get into the weeds real quick. I think our minds quickly go, our mind do, you know, okay, well, what about this? You know, we'll get there. Um, I think our bussing plan is. Good as what it can be, you know, given, uh. Unknowns and ongoing conversations that, you know, there's a lot of logistics there. All the logistics stuff are like flipped on its head and split in half and it's, that's a lot of work to like. Um, noodle together. I, so I appreciate that. Um, of course, we, I, you know, I have questions about how, what are the arts gonna look like and what are the, what's the daily instruction gonna look like? You can kind of see it in your mind's eye, you know, you got one room and it's at half capacity and everyone's split out and so it's kind of coming together. Um. So just keep, keep up the good work. I know that there are a lot of unanswered questions, so. Fair enough. Um. I have questions about the local, I thought it was, I thought the, the governor. Or lieutenant governor maybe referred to it as the local, like a health cooperative. So if and when there is a, a positive test case. The superintendent, the admin, and the team are not the ones doing the contact tracing and going through all that. It's gonna be handed off to local. Another local group. I thought they called it cooperative, but I may have been wrong. So I have questions about what that's gonna look like and who that, that's gonna be and how that will flow. And I appreciate that that's not up and running until later this month. Um, I also have concerns about the self-assessment. Uh. I, I hear why. Yes, a temperature is not the only symptom. Um, there are others and those things are probably best discovered at home by, by parents. I agree with that. I don't know if that's enough. That's just a lingering question that. I'll be thinking about. I don't expect an answer. Again, these don't have answers, I, I don't think. At this.
Thank you. Uh, John, back to you.
Um. Taking place when it's off, off campus, off, or out of our buildings.
I think we missed the first half of your question.
Uh, what, where is childcare going to take place if it's not in our buildings? Where is that gonna be located? Did I cut out again?
No, I was trying to mute and couldn't hit the button.
Okay.
Um, we have been working and Tammy could speak to this too. We've been working with the community center to secure spaces within the community center for. to secure spaces within the community center for um, childcare during the school day for those in distance learning. Did you want to say more about that, Tammy?
Um, you know, we've got a lot of different spaces that are available to us that can accommodate a lot of children. So I think that we have that answer covered as far as being able to take care of kids. And what's nice about the community center is that they also have the library there so that kids can have library time. There's the tremendous playground, so there are a lot of amenities that are afforded to us in that location.
That's great. Um, do, uh, do we feel that, uh, I think you kind of answered this, but do we feel distance learning will go better than it did in the spring? Just because I, I think our priorities are shifting now from just keeping kids connected to making sure real learning goes on. Not that it didn't, but in a lot of cases, the kids had to want it, you know? And uh, I think that that's going to be an important part.
Because I wasn't here in the spring, I think I will let the uh, principals speak to that.
One of the things we learned, you know, by talking to students and parents is really just this idea of consistency. Uh, and so one of the things that I'm excited for, especially at the middle school, is having some time to think about what that platform looks like, making it consistent across the board and really talking about what our communication to students um, and the community and parents really is going to be so that it's consistent. So everybody understands what's expected, what it looks like and, and where to go for help. Um, so in my view, um, the work we've been doing, it, it will be much better. Um, and I think we found some ways to make it a lot more engaging for students too.
You know, and also, um, you know, the summer school session, we're halfway through right now and we've been um, completely hybrid learning. So the students have been there on and off 50% of the time and a lot of the insight um, that's been acquired over the summer is going to be applied to our professional development uh, when workshop weeks happens. Actually, it's happening before that as we had a group of teachers that already investigated some of the best practices and blended instruction even before summer school started. Um, so just to get, you know, pick the brains of the teachers that have been doing the summer school instruction in the hybrid and really spread kind of what worked the best and what needs to be adjusted and use that for our benefit going into actually a real, you know, a hybrid or blended type of instruction. Um, because I agree with um, Mr. Grunseth, um, in the spring and March, I mean, that was emergency instruction. March 13th hit and we weren't able to see the kids in the building anymore. So it was really like, okay, how can we do this in this emergency situation? So now really thinking through, you know, what does hybrid learning look like? And getting a little practice under our belts during the four weeks of summer school is going to be really beneficial to make those adjustments.
Then last question, Ben. Uh, it's kind of the big one, right, is Nicola County currently is under the 20% threshold. La Sura County is over the 20% threshold, but a vast majority of our student population is in Nicola County. Are we being forced to count uh, where we sit based on treating both counties 50-50? Or can we take the percent number of kids that we have in uh, in Listur County versus the number we have in Nicola County and use that as part of our algorithm or whatever in figuring out whether we should be in a different format?
I, I would like to take a stab at this and then um, superintendent and administration can correct me. That seems like a good process, right? Um, we did have a similar question uh, come from the live stream, so I did want to acknowledge uh, that. Uh, their question was, why don't we drill down into zip code uh, data instead of looking at just countywide? Um, I, I do have a couple of thoughts. That is where people live. Um, that's not necessarily how we live our lives. So um, you know, some parts of La Sura County are farther away than Mankato um, from our school district and uh, Mankato's numbers are like around 30. So um, you know, we're not uh, making decisions based on Mankato, but a lot of us go there to shop and a lot of us are interacting with those uh, uh, folks that live in that zone that is at a much higher level. You know, we can't, and then I'm stealing this from uh, Superintendent Grunseth. We, we don't want to get into a situation where we're cherry picking the data that we agree with. Um, and there is some sense to saying these parts that are our school district are much lower. When Gustavus comes back, um, when our numbers change, if that data changes, are we then ready to say, well, now, now we got to be all distance because those zip codes? I think we're trying to take a broad approach. We're trying to come up with a system that uh, will be the most stable. And so we're looking at those, those numbers. If we do take the county as a whole, um, that also takes more individual cases to move the needle, right? If we're drilling down into zip codes, we're talking about a smaller number of people. You get five cases, you're going to move more quickly uh, on the scale that the, the governor uh, recommended than you would if you're talking about uh, two counties worth of population, which is probably around 50,000 or something. I don't know what La Sura County is at. Uh, so that's my thought on that.
May I interject something if I could?
Sure, Dr. Soderland.
Any one of these data points uh, that we have for the guidelines, whether it's a zip code, whether it's a county, whether it's the 14-day moving average, and these are uh, dictating whether we're going to be distance learning or hybrid or full in. These are all guess numbers. I mean, let's, let's just cut to the quick. This is, this is our best guess right now. So what we're going to do, in my opinion, is we're going to say, okay, here's what the governor's guidelines are. We're going to comply with what those are. We're going to make adjustments accordingly. And as we go forward, my, my assumption is in two months, we're going to have some new data points and we're going to find out more information. But right now, this is uh, it, it might look like an arbitrary and a capricious way to, to set up a standard. But I don't know what, what else we can do at this point. We're trying to, we're attempting to do something that really should be done surgically and we're in here with a, with a sledgehammer. And, and we're being crude in a way in how we're handling this, but we have such a lack of information and knowledge that this is our, our best guess at how to handle that. That's all I have.
Ben, I think you're on mute.
Yeah, sorry, Superintendent Grunseth. Thank you, Dr. Soderland.
Hey Ben, I want to say one more thing. Um, I think that, you know, we have to remember too that this magical number that gets, you know, put out by the magical formula is, is guidance, right? I mean, so as a school, then we're just, we can decide, so we can always decide to do more restrictive than what that number is, right? So, because I know people are wondering about why if our, if the Nicola County number is in that tier right below where the elementary kids would go to school, you know, that isn't the law. We don't have to do it that way. That's just guidance. So we're just choosing to do the hybrid for all. Does that make sense? I think some people think that that's just like how it has to be, um, whatever that number is, where we want to do something that'll sustain longer, so that's why we're doing the hybrid for all. But some people, I think, feel that, you know, well, you guys aren't doing what you're supposed to be doing. And I feel like we are doing what we're supposed to be doing, so.
Two thoughts on that. Sorry, there's some feedback. Hopefully that'll go away. Uh, I think, first of all, we're, we're talking about numbers that are already two weeks old. So, in three weeks old, really. And so that, you know, if, I've looked at the numbers that include the last week, which aren't part of the official uh, M D H numbers that we're supposed to take guidance on, but will be in another week, those numbers are higher. So I think you're, you're correct. The, the guidance that the governor made said, you can always be more restrictive. You can't be less restrictive. So if you look at the numbers that we are working with today, uh, a month before school starts, we may be allowed to say we can be uh, fully in school at the elementary level. I think if we looked at the numbers in another week, the guidance would say we can't do that. And what I'm hearing from this plan is we're really going back and forth between those two levels and we don't want to have to change up on parents every week to say, well, you know, we made it under this time, so now it's full week. Oh, but next week it's going to be two days, so find three days off from work and figure it out. Like, this plan that the uh, superintendent and admin team have made is our best attempt to do what's, what's safe and, and the best for our students and staff uh, and our spaces, but also I think is going to be the most consistent. And I don't want to see those numbers go up because those are real people um, with real illness and potentially uh, really serious uh, side effects from, from this disease, right? Uh, but if those numbers do go up, this model still works. If we were all in, the numbers don't have to change very much before the governor says, look, you've got to change, so.
And then the other thing I wanted to, we, we are having good communication, I'm saying this as a question slash statement with um, our employee groups. Like, I'm thinking this through in my head with these teachers that are going to be doing distance learning and in-person learning. And when we did distance learning, even though it was emergency learning, it was, you know, it's a lot of work to manage that. And so, but, so we have really good communication with our, with our teacher union group. That's what I heard, correct?
Yeah, yes.
I mean, yeah. Sorry about that. Yes, um, we did have um, a good meeting today. Doctor, or Mr. Grunseth, you can certainly um, jump in too, but we had a good meeting today. Communication is, is good and um, we have a plan. Okay, because I don't know, like, how many staff days they get to plan or I don't know if that's discussions that we need to have or if I'm saying something I'm not supposed to, but it seems like a lot of work to me, so.
Yeah, those are all things that we are continuing to work on and we will continue to have um, close conversation with our employee groups too, to make sure that they are part of those conversations. I did want to um, just kind of reiterate some of what Chair Leonard was saying, that we really want to pay attention to trend data so that we're not um, reacting to, to small changes in those numbers. So um, right now, if we were um, looking at that 18 and 22 as our, as our numbers, those are right, right next to the line. And as you said, you know, one or two cases or one or two points on this scale could change that really quickly. What we want to do is look at those trends over time. So if we see a change of one or two, but those numbers have consistently been rising for three weeks in a row, you know, we want to keep an eye on that to know far enough ahead of time if we need to make those changes. Uh, the same is true. We want to see if there's a, a dip in those numbers. You know, I, if it, if it's dipping by a couple of points in one week, we're probably not going to get too excited about changing until we see that number um, changing over time. Where our numbers are right now, we would have to drop almost 10 points on that scale or increase 10 points on that scale to be farther away from that everybody in hybrid step. That's why we're feeling that this is where we can maintain the longest. Now, we could have a sudden, a sudden spread in our community and need to change more quickly. Or we could have it drop off pretty quickly. It really depends on us as a community and how we are, how we're living right now and how careful we are being and uh, how much we're wearing those masks in public and washing our hands and not touching our faces and all those things that we've heard over and over and over again. As a community, we can change the model that we're using by how we are controlling the spread.
Yeah, very well said. And, and you know, another thing I really like about the hybrid plan, especially when it's at the beginning of the year and there are so many unknowns. If we were back 100% and uh, everyone's in the classroom and every teacher is in front of the kids and one teacher gets sick, what do we do with that classroom for 14 days? Let's just assume everybody's going to be fine, but because there's that many kids in a classroom, uh, you know, I was reading a story today where second day of school, they've already shut down a second grade classroom in Georgia because that classroom was full of students and the teacher uh, has a positive test. And so they have taken now that entire class of second graders out of the equation for two weeks. That's super disruptive to, to those kids, uh, to the parents, uh, to everyone. Um, I think this al- allows for students uh, who maybe can't attend a day they were normally supposed to attend to just slide into distance learning. Uh, it allows us some flexibility with staff. It protects us uh, from having staff or students who come in contact with COVID uh, to not interact with uh, with the entire school, right? Because we've got different kids there on different days. And because it's hybrid and we're able to space those kids out, you know, we're talking about social distance. We're talking about masks. Some of those contact points are going to be looked at by the Minnesota Department of Health and considered uh, not serious. And we don't need to disrupt those uh, kids' experience or those staff's experience because we were able to be socially distanced. It'd be a different story if those kids uh, and the staff were closer together as they would be in a normal uh, classroom with the normal numbers of students present. So uh, I, I really appreciate so many things about what this model uh, gives us.
Uh, Chair Leonard, can I?
Absolutely.
So uh, I wasn't asking for us to make up our own way to decide whether we are under 20% or not. I just wanted clarification on how the state expects us to interpret the data that's given. Do we take them 50-50 and add them together and divide by two? Um, is there any clarity on how we are supposed to interpret that? And I have one follow-up after that answer.
The guidance from the state was to use the less favorable numbers.
So we have to use La Sures? La Sura County is what you're telling me?
That, that is what they are recommending. We, of course, do have, as the governor said, we can make local decisions if, if that fit for us. You know, if we were, there are some communities that are, you know, way on the fringe of, of a county and they're really not connected to other areas of that county, maybe they would look at more localized numbers. Being where we are, um, we could probably do some of that, but La Sura is a, a smaller county with a smaller population and their number is going to fluctuate more. You know, it can be affected by fewer cases. And so we'll, we'll be looking at those. You know, I've, I've previewed those next numbers too, and in the next numbers, Niklet is higher and La Sura is lower. So it's not really looking at, um, you know, which, which county? I, I think we really have to consider that we are both counties. And um, I don't want to get to a point where we're saying, oh, it's, you know, it's all La Sura's fault or this time it's all Niklet's fault. You know, it's, we, we own, we are both communities. That's just who we are.
And then lastly, I, there was a caveat put in there that if there was a spike at a nursing home or what I anticipate, knowing, working at a college for many years, a spike at the college, that we could justify uh, our position based on understanding that that's just the college number or that's the, a spike in a nursing home that would not actually affect our uh, our situation. Is that correct? How do you interpret that?
Well, I, there, there was a caveat in there, but I would suggest that the nursing home is probably a better example of that because the residents aren't um, necessarily out in the community. They're not in the businesses, the restaurants, and mixing necessarily with the population as much as college students would be. You know, college students are out in the stores, they're in the grocery store, they're in the restaurants. They, they are mixing with the population more so than someone who may be at, in assisted who may be in an assisted living facility or a nursing home situation.
Great. Thank you for all the answers that you've given me. I really appreciate it. And it it's, I feel like I have to give a reluctant I vote for this plan, not because it's a bad plan, but just because I feel like if we could get our elementary kids in the classroom at some point, I think that's going to really enhance the overall learning from that group. And it's such a critical area for learning. But and with the understanding that you'll that you guys will revisit the scanning process, I think that's come up not just from me, but from a couple other board members.
All right, thank you. I don't have any further questions and I've had the freedom to to energize a lot of comments throughout. I would, just to talk about the health screening. You know, I work for an employer of 400 or so people and we've had about 600 to 1,300 people a day come through Split Rock Lighthouse so far. And so I'm not speaking on behalf of my employer, but those are the experiences I've had in in my day job. I think that relying on staff and relying on students and families to who know their children best, to really ask them to make those health assessments in the morning. While it's not going to be a perfect system, you know, they're going to know their kids better. They're going to see them for maybe half an hour or an hour in the morning versus a health screening, which is asking a kid if they feel okay, which I've asked my kid lots of questions. I don't know that I get great answers all the time. This is at least a chance for adults who know and love those kids to make decisions based on that. You know, the bus is going to be one of those points where we will keep kids safe, but they are going to be distanced less than they are outside. And so we'd be asking, if we were abdicating those screening responsibilities or or taking on those screening responsibilities at school, they've already gotten on the bus with 29 other kids before they get to us. We have that isolation room or that that room. What are the chances a student is, you know, going to forget to to do something or we have an additional question and we have to go find their parent? Or what if that kid is asymptomatic? I think, again, one of the things I really like about this plan is that by having fewer kids in the class, fewer days a week, we are giving ourselves flexibility. We are keeping them safer because we're able to keep them further apart because we don't have every single kid that goes to North Elementary mixing with every other kid that goes to North Elementary every single day. Again, it's not a perfect plan. And we're going to need parents and guardians' help to to make this work. We're not going to be able to do it without them. A couple of questions and comments have come in, again, via the live stream via email. I will go ahead and make the broad pronouncement that staff will respond to those emails. I think that in most cases, they're fairly specific questions. There was a question about the location of the daycare and some concerns there just with the number of of kids that might be at the community center already. There was a question about how pairs will be assigned. And I believe that that is specificity that has not yet been planned out. And really, our administrative team will do that, but needed the guidance of the school board tonight to vote on which plan, which model we would be addressing. And then staffing patterns and those kinds of things will be addressed afterwards. And that is something that, again, Etive said, we have good communication with our employee groups. I feel quite confident that we can communicate those details in advance of of school. There have been a few questions about, you know, why, why, why aren't we 100% in school? You know, for various reasons, for various motivations, for various views on the situation that we're in. Why aren't we 100% in school? I don't want to pass the buck, but I think very clearly the governor will not allow us to be 100% in school. Based on the guidance and based on the numbers that the governor is using to evaluate whether or not we can be in school, we are not able to be in school full-time. So that's, I think, the the shortest answer I can give. And I think you heard a lot of discussion around wanting this to be a safe experience, wanting this to be something that we could sustain, wanting this to be a really rigorous education like we are used to in St. Peter. And I think for all of those reasons, I support the administration's plan for hybrid learning to begin the 2020-2021 school year.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is the resolution tonight approving the plan, like, this is what we're going to do if distance learning is, this is the hybrid and this is the in-person? Is that what we're approving? Or are we approving, yep, we agree with the plan and we agree with the recommendation? Or is the recommendation of where we fit in those three categories, is that what we give to administration? Or do we, as a school board, have to agree to that every time? Do you know what I'm saying?
I do. The the resolution is in your board packet. It should be available online and will be in the in the minutes if it is voted on. I will read sections. It's a it's a full two-page resolution and there's a lot of whereas's. But there are three sections and I will just read those for the record because I think that that is pretty clear about what the resolution does and what we are deciding and then the flexibility that the superintendent has to make changes to that. Because like we heard, new numbers come out every week and we don't necessarily want to be changing every week. But I believe we want to trust our administrative team and our superintendent to make decisions not based on the schedule of the board. And we can't always schedule a emergency board meeting. So here, let me quickly read this. Section one, the superintendent is hereby directed to implement the following to open the 2020-21 school year reopening plan 2020-2021. And we spent a long time going over that plan. Section two, the superintendent is hereby authorized after consultation with the school board chair and notification to the school board to select and implement a different learning model for the school district or any specific school building without school board action if the superintendent reasonably believes that prompt implementation of a different learning model is necessary and that constraints of time and public health considerations render it impractical to hold a school board meeting to approve the implementation. The learning model selected and implemented by the superintendent shall continue in effect unless and until the school board, in consultation with the superintendent and appropriate school district staff and public health officials, deems it the best, in the best interest of the school district and to its students to implement a different learning model. Section three, the superintendent will provide regular updates to the school board regarding the school district's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH respectfully. So I I think what that says is we have the plan that we spent the last hour and a half looking at. And that has several options for education. And it also is tied to those numbers provided by the Minnesota Department of Health. And we talked a lot about how we might transition between levels. We wanted to be transparent and open with parents and guardians tonight because we understand that they have to plan for the school year and that this is going to probably take some extra work on their part to make sure that they have things in place for their families for this to work in their households. But we're not necessarily saying this is the model that we are are going to go with for very long because the numbers for which we would make that decision have not happened yet. So.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep. The answer is yes and no, and I like that, so thank you.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
In, as you read that, I think it would be good to, I I think you're very good at this and just use, be very, I don't know what the word, deft might be the word of, you know, making a decision without, if the school board, members of the school board are objecting, even if it's a minority, but it's more than one. I think a meeting isn't the worst thing in the world to have come together. And I, you know, they may get voted down, but I but I think it's good that they're heard. You know, whichever seven of us it might be.
No, I absolutely agree. I don't think that we want to make decisions about our learning model without the board. I think what this resolution does for me is gives our administration flexibility. There also will be other things in this plan, like what to do when someone is is diagnosed or has a positive test. And so we may need to make a building level decision that wouldn't fundamentally be outside the plan and wouldn't be able to wait three days for a board meeting. But I think in general, again, and I've said it a lot, what I appreciate about looking to starting with a hybrid plan is if we were looking to be 100% in-person at the elementary level, which the numbers this week say is still something the governor would allow. But if you look at next week's data, it isn't. We would be in a situation where we would be in violation of the governor's order fairly immediately. And I don't know that that's something the district wants to do either. So I think what we have set up and the fact that we've got a buffer and some stability, really, best case, you know, best practice, we are, we are having a meeting, we are scheduling a meeting with three days' notice. Worst-case scenario, we are able to call an emergency meeting as we did at the beginning of this crisis. So I wholeheartedly agree with you and then I talk for five more minutes, so I apologize.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not arguing the point. I think I agree with where we're at and, yeah. I just, as you read the language, it seemed nothing more needs to be said. I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Dixon, second.
So John Carlson made a motion and Drew Dixon made a second. We had a fair amount of initial conversation and discussion, but is there additional discussion?
Chair.
Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, if if I may, in the strongest terms possible, I would like to have our school district interact and reach out to medical professionals within our community and and get some input. And I appreciate public health, but I believe we have infectious disease expert. We have a number of medical doctors. I think my concern is that we implement a plan and then people freak out. And they may need to freak out, but we need to have education and we need to know that we're doing the right thing. If there is an outbreak, if there if there's a classroom that has two or three cases, positive cases, how are we reacting to that? Is everybody else panicked and our numbers are still within the guidelines? So in the strongest way possible, I am asking the school, Superintendent Grand Seth, to reach out to some of the medical people in our community, the medical doctors, and enlist their help and input. And each, the reason, you know, from a political standpoint, the governor did a a great thing because he's pushing this decision off onto the independent school districts. But we are independent and we're a community. And I would really like to see us take advantage of the professionals we have here. That's all I have.
Thank you, Members Soderland. And actually, there are, there have been some people in the community who have reached out via email that provide us with some information. But I think that we could certainly have them be a part of reviewing our plan and hopefully they will, they will give us some feedback as well on on the plan. I I know that we have received a few more emails during the course of this meeting. But maybe we can connect later on some of some of your connections as well.
Yeah, thank you. And again, it's been stated many times, many ways that if you, if you want distance learning, 100% distance learning for your child, that is available to you. If you feel that your individual child would benefit from more in-person education, that is something that the district can discuss with you. We are, we are trying to create a learning environment that is inclusive of all students, but we recognize that individual students are going to have individual needs. And I can't guarantee that we will be able to do everything exactly as people would want on an individual basis. But I think that this plan does allow for those conversations to happen and I appreciate it. We do have a a motion and a second for this resolution.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
This is Tim Locatskert. I just, I just want to make one statement. My internet went out. I did not have any other questions other than that, but I don't want to kick a dead horse, but I'm going to. When it comes to the screenings, I, I, I like the plan as it sits. I think that we're not going to be able to check all the boxes. I realize that. I don't think any district is going to be able to check every single box. And of course, we're not going to make every single person happy. So I think this is a thorough, good plan that I am going to vote for. I, I do want to, I, my concern from a standpoint is if we self-screen and allow everybody to self-screen, I also work for the same employer, Ben, that you do. And I know how people are and that sometimes it's just easier to put the onus on somebody else or some other entity. And I, I worry that we're taking on more than what we should by not by saying, hey, we're going to have, even if it's half the kids, we're going to have half the kids coming in, which is still 1,000 kids into four schools, four or five schools, and we're, and we're we're, we're taking on that responsibility of people not necessarily screening accurately or screening well. So I'm just throwing it out there and I'm not going to say anymore. Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We have a motion and a second for the resolution. This is a roll call vote. Tim, we'll start with you.
Locatskert, aye.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderlund, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Drew? Drew?
You didn't get it? Dixon, aye.
Leonard, aye. Resolution carries unanimously. Resolution carries unanimously. All right, we can move on to action item number two. So we talked about a lot of things that need a lot of staff time and also need funding. So Superintendent Gronseth?
Thank you. This is one of those things that you passed a similar motion last fiscal year. And the the idea of asking for this isn't that we have any specific item that we have a need for because we would plan for that within the monies that we have. This is really in case something comes up that we need to respond to that is unforeseen, that we don't really have time to plan for. Our, our hope would be that we would not spend these dollars, that we wouldn't have to. But it really is creating an emergency fund for responding to things related to COVID that we don't know about yet.
Do we have any discussion questions?
I would be willing to approve that with a contingency that Superintendent Gronseth, if if you need to spend emergency money, you at least get a verbal from Chairperson Leonard or Vice Chairperson Locenscard so that it's just somebody on the board is kept in the loop on what's happening.
Absolutely. And our, our hope would be that we wouldn't have any of these expenses that would come up that we would be doing outside of a board process of of approval of expenditures. But I would definitely be in touch with at least Chair Leonard if there was an emergency situation, regardless of whether we had to spend money or not to keep the board up to date.
This is Tracy. I have a question. And not that you guys memorize the budget or anything, but of the amount that we approved this spring, that was 100,000. And how much of that was used? I mean, how, how much was that tapped into? I know, you know, we paid for a lot of hotspots and that kind of stuff, but.
I would need to review those expenses and have to get back to you. Maybe you, Steve, knows.
You know, I don't. I do see that Tim is on the line or on the call as well. So I'm, I'm not sure if he has those numbers in front of him either, but that's certainly we could, something we could get you, Tracy.
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious, like, you know, oh, there's Tim.
Yeah, I don't have them, you know, directly in front of me. We coded them all specifically for them. You know, the, the technology was probably the biggest, the item with the hotspots and those things. We were able to actually use some other funds from A&amp;I probably that were not used because we didn't have the end of the school year. So we're, we're probably going to be able to transfer some of those to other areas too. So it's kind of a work in progress until we get the audit done. I hate to say that, but we've got them hopefully pretty much identified and I'll try and put them together for you.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. And just so the public understands, we have a different fiscal year than the calendar year. So that was in last year's budget. So there is likely a considerable amount that was left over from that original request, but we're renewing that request because it's a different budget year for the school district. Do we have a motion?
I move we allocate the 100,000 for COVID-19 issues this year.
Tracy Stewie will second.
Excellent. We have a motion from Tim Locensguard and a second from Tracy Stewie. We'll do a roll call vote. Tim?
Aye.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Action item number three, consider options for format of school board meetings. I ask that this be placed on the agenda because we made decisions tonight about how students should be engaging with their school year. And I think it's fair that we consider doing the same. So Superintendent Gronseth, do you want to walk us through your plan for school board meetings going forward?
Sure. This is actually a continuation of an item that you began talking about in June and then tabled that to to the future when we knew more. We were kind of waiting for the, the governor's guidance. Now that we have that, as you mentioned, Chair Leonard asked to bring that back. My recommendation is that we really mirror the recommendations that we're making for students and staff, that you have three models, just like we do in the schools, that there's in-person, that there's a hybrid option where the board is meeting in person, but the public is viewing remotely and administration is participating remotely for probably some and some probably in-person. The, the same would be available to board members if, if they needed to be remote as well. And then a final one, if the district were to go to distance learning, that the board would go back to full virtual meetings. My recommendation would be that your meetings follow the same mode that we are in, in the school. So if we, if we're recommending hybrid at the beginning of the school, that we would recommend that the board use that same hybrid model at the beginning of school as well, that the board could meet using social distancing and that the board would be in-person, but viewing would be through remote streaming live like we're doing now. So yeah, that's, and then if you were all in-person, that would include public as well, but we would need to really look at the social distancing piece and capacity of the rooms that you'd be using, both for hybrid and in-person.
Chair Leonard?
Yeah.
I, I have a concern about our current meeting room and is there another place where we could videotape or livestream the actual meeting that we're having if the board were to meet in person? The setting in the governor's room is doesn't really lend itself to social distancing. And I'm wondering if, I don't know what Media Center looks like now because I know that that was under construction this summer, if, if we have a place that we could more easily socially distance and have it livestreamed.
I think we can, we can brainstorm some potential spots and bring that back if this plan is voted on. I would recommend that we start that with the school year because our next regular board meeting is August 17th. And I think that the admin team and all of our staff have a lot of things to, to work on in the next couple of weeks and making sure I have a microphone at a board meeting probably is a super high priority. So if we could continue with this format for the August board meeting and then move into the hybrid model, we'll do that. We'll look at spots. We have to have a spot where we can be mic'd, where we can be recorded, where we can see people on a screen. So there are lots of places like that, but not every places like that. So if that's an acceptable answer, people feel like they can move ahead with this, this item, I think that we can figure it out before September.
You know, I would make a motion then to do that with the exception that we can do it. You know what I mean? That the technology would work and the space would work and whatever. But so that would be us being the board members and Mr. Gronseth and then everybody else's remote, including admin, correct?
Admin could choose. We don't, we really, yeah, we, we'll, we'll pick a room that's large enough to accommodate the board plus other members of the admin team. I think our discussion about keeping the public remote viewing, personally, I think being able to stream the meetings live on the internet is the most inclusive way for the public to see what's going on. But if we have space limitations in the space that we're in, I would hate for seven people to show up and for us to be able to say, well, four of you can come in, but three of you can't. That doesn't feel very inclusive either. So that was the motivation behind it.
Yep. No, no, I totally get that. And you know, if we had 40-some people watching tonight, that's about 39 more than we normally have if we were in person. So so yes, I'll make a motion for that then.
I'll second.
Okay, so Stewie makes a motion and Soderland seconds. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I was just going to say, who would be in charge of exploring the options that we have? I mean, does that fall on one of our principals or?
I think we could bring that to the August board meeting would be my thought.
I, I will be working closely with Chris Overbro to, who really can help us with the technology pieces that we would need in any of those given spaces. And then he'd, he'd help to guide those discussions.
Because I think if we could pull it off before the August, I believe it's 17th meeting, or I can't remember the date, I'm sorry. I think that I would, I would be in favor of trying to do it in our next board meeting. But if that's too soon, then I get it. But
You know, I think if everything goes super smooth with figuring out how to safely have kids in class and, and we, we conquer that and we have the bandwidth to figure out the school board meeting, then yeah, I wouldn't stand in, stand in its way. But
I, I retract what I said. I'm assuming, I'm assuming that guy has got to be incredibly busy right now trying to get ready for hybrid learning. So I, I retract my, my favor.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think as a school board member, that I'm willing to abide by anything that we're passing that we expect somebody else to do. And so whatever we're asking the students to do and the administrators and the teachers and the parents, I'm willing to do as well.
Yeah, thank you for that. We, we do have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. Tim?
Locens, card, aye.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
Leonard, aye. Motion carries unanimously. That wraps up our action items and our agenda items. With the exception of just letting the public know when our upcoming meetings are, we have a Personnel Committee meeting on Tuesday, August 11th at 8:00 a.m. And we have a regular board meeting, as mentioned, Monday, August 17th at 6:30 p.m. via livestream and this virtual portal. So
Are the committee meetings livestreamed also or not?
Uh, we are working on that.
Oh, okay. I was going to say, I just figured out where the link was for the other meeting tonight. I was just curious.
Great. Anything, anything further? Well, thank you so much. This was a robust discussion about really, really important stuff. I can't, I can't think of a, of a more important discussion than I've had on the school board in my tenure. And it's going to be, it's going to be a great year and I have all of the confidence in our staff, our administrative team, parents and guardians of the district. And despite all of the unknowns and all of the, the trepidation, I am excited about kids getting back in school and doing something that feels normal.
Chair Leonard, I just want to say thank you to the administrators and Mr. Gronseth in particular for answering all of our questions tonight. We, a lot of us, me, I know I asked a lot and the fact that you answered them is so appreciative and you, and it, I think, not all boards function like this. And I think that's, that, that was really great discussion tonight. So thank you, you and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the staff ain't too bad. We'll keep them around.
Thank you all. Motion to adjourn?
I totally move.
Excellent. Locensguard makes the motion.
Dixon, second.
All right, Dixon seconds. Tim?
Aye.
John?
John Carlson, aye.
Bill?
Bill Soderland, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Stewie, aye.
Drew?
Dixon, aye.
That's enough. It doesn't matter what I think. Have a good night, everybody.